No, he didn't have the grades for that.
That's not so bad.
He does now.
Good evening.
Oh my, where is everybody?
Well, we have two members who are not going to be here today. Neither Dan nor Mike Devonport are here today. Let's stand for, um, pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nancy, how are you?
Craig Navisit.
Hi, yes, here.
Thank you.
I'm here.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum, but we'll start with the first reception of visitors. This meeting agenda includes two opportunities for comments for the audience. This is the first reception of visitors for members to, audience members to address the board about any agenda item on which the board will vote. Is there anybody who would like to address the board? Hearing none, we'll move on to the board workshop, Project Altitude.
All right, pull up the presentation here. All right, in a moment, I'm just going to run through the general concept with this. Mark will join in. At the end, we're joined today by Michael Casa, who's from the Downers Grove Economic Development Corporation. He's got a couple of words to say at the end of the presentation. And then we have a representative here, and I'm sorry.
Jason Lake with Cushman in Wakefield.
Jason Lake. So, to also help answer any questions if there's any that Mark and I can't answer on the project as we go on. So, the presentation itself, or the proposal itself, is, I think this is going to become more of a commonplace thing that we bring to you. It's a tool that economic developers are using. I've seen other superintendents talk about this. Our legal counsel has participated in drafting several agreements like this just in the last year alone. But the general premise is that somebody either in your community or that wants to move into your community would like to redevelop or add great value to existing property on your tax base. And the proposal is to phase in the increases of their taxes over a period of time to either encourage somebody to stay in your community or to encourage somebody to come in from the outside. The proposal that is before us here is pretty typical in the fact that they want to phase in the increase in property taxes due to the improvements on their property over a 10-year period of time. So, basically, we would keep what our existing tax base is on that property. They would redevelop the property. Because of that, their taxes would go up, but instead of all at once, it would phase in over a 10-year period. So, here one, we'd have more, just not at the same amount as if it all came in. And our base with this chunk of property would remain at the same or grow between now and then. In exchange for that, the business would make some guarantees about the property, that there would be major improvements to the property, that they would remain in the community for the duration of the abatement period of time, and actually, our agreement with them would require a certain period of time after that abatement period of time, and that they would maintain a certain number of employees paid at a higher level of employment, so highly paid, highly trained employees. So, if we can go to the second slide. If you have questions at any point, jump in here.
Let me just ask, just because I know this is to retain an existing, but if this was a new business, what would that mean in terms of escalating the tax?
With somebody else might add, this is pretty typical agreement. Michael, you're seeing these pretty typical of the 10% per year.
So, if it was a new business coming in, it would be 10, 20, 30, 40, okay.
My question is, what guarantee? If something should happen where they just maybe close shop or close business, we're given this upfront, what guarantee do we have?
We'll bring, we're working on the actual resolution and abatement contract, and we should be able to send that to, I think, middle of this week. But in there, it guarantees that they will pay back the entire amount if they pack up shop and leave.
Yeah, where would we, like, if, where would we be in line with the creditors? You know, if something should happen, where would we be in, like, the order of?
I don't know. I'd have to ask our attorneys for that question.
You know what I'm saying? If something bad should, I'm hoping not, but if something should, where would we be in that order?
I'd have to ask our attorneys for that question.
And potentially, this is the type of work that the attorneys have done.
Yes, yes, our attorneys are familiar with this.
Okay.
I understand what you're saying, though, Rick. Yeah.
Yeah, I just, where would we be in line of that? Yeah.
Yep. So, the idea here is that the property tax rate at least remains flat, but hopefully grows because they're going to be reinvesting into this key piece of property within our boundaries. So, they're proposing here that they would basically raise the property and put in a brand-new 200,000-square-foot manufacturing facility. It would retain about 300 jobs, high-paying jobs in Downers Grove. They're investing directly $20 million into the property. And then, obviously, if you invest that much into a property over time, your amount you're paying in property taxes grows. This is kind of the general idea of the structure. So, it's just the phase in over that 10 years. And if you flip to the next slide, you'll see what this looks like in, this is very much estimates. So, the only amount we're pretty close to is, that we're sure of, is that projected base taxes on property is what we would expect in the next year that they would pay in property taxes on that property. Then, that figure increases at CPI in that first column. The second is the projected growth with CPI based on the amount that they're investing into the property. These are all just forecasted numbers, obviously. And then, it shows the rate at which that amount would increase for District 99 over that period of time.
So, if there wasn't this improvement, we would anticipate $33,000, and then the next year, 34, 35.
Right, just a little bit of an increase, okay.
So, in over 10 years, we collect 440, about 443,000, estimated based on CPI, all of the riders in that statement, right? If they make the improvements on the property, we're looking at over a 10-year property of bringing in $1.3 million. Once again, all the same forecasting, everything being equal, everything else. Now, that's not everything you would bring in if you didn't abate. But if you didn't abate, you might lose the tenant altogether.
Sure.
You know, there's other areas that are competing for this kind of business, just as someday, we might be competing against somebody else to move somebody into.
Pay some here.
You know? So anyways, that's kind of how the projection works. So, our taxes, taxes that we're bringing in from this company continue to increase over that 10-year period of time. It just phases it in.
So, this doesn't, I mean, this seems like a classic win-win-win situation for the district, for the community, and for the company. It doesn't really cost us anything because our taxes stay the same. We just don't get the full amount for 10 years, but allows the company to invest and grow it.
Right.
It seems like a great idea.
It does.
You know, and we'd have a legal agreement, which I'll get to this week, that guarantees us several things that we've outlined here, the development in, that they'll stay in our district, and that they're willing to invest in that property.
Generally, companies sign multi-year leases anyway, right? So, potentially, I mean.
This is just that it's an agreement with us, which is unusual for somebody to do that. If you flip to the next page, you'll see the win-win-wins that Dan was outlining there. So, there's quite a few of the direct benefits that go right to District 99, but then underneath it, there's several indirect benefits. Some of those would be seen as benefits to, like, the village of Downers Grove, or just our general community, or the business park in which they reside. The ones at the top really are benefits directly to us. Having, you know, there's, having a good manufacturing industry within our boundaries, where we're very much a more residential area is a good thing, and they're in a key business park to attract others. Mark, anything I'm missing out on there?
No, I would just say, you know, there is an underlying, I guess, belief that it's, what's being presented to us is real, you know, that this company has other options. It is a large multinational, or multi-international, if it's international, it's a U.S. company, national company. And so, and we're aware of the fact that Illinois has pretty high property taxes. It's how we fund our schools, and so, you have to believe that they do have other options to locate a large facility, manufacturing facility. So, if you believe that, and I do, it's saving us, maybe them relocating somewhere else and having that property, like, our increase, assumed increase on existing property could actually go down because if that property's vacant for a long period of time, it would drop its value, it would just transfer property costs onto the taxpayers. So, I think it's a very fair estimate. We're only estimating some numbers there, but it's the best I think we can do with our facts that we have right now, and I support it. I think it's a positive thing for us to do. I support tips, and I think this is probably just as effective as a tip in this case.
What are the downsides?
The downside is the slow increase. The other downside is other businesses in the community come back to us in the future and say, "We want the same deal."
Right.
But at the same time, you know, they're still going to be paying more in property taxes, right?
Right, yeah.
And I think this is, this is probably going to be more the direction, especially for large businesses in your community, I think you're going to see a lot of this, especially in older properties. This is going to happen. And it's going to have to be a tool that villages use to entice people to come into their boundaries, right? Because they're going to be competing against other places that have it.
And that is absolutely happening in Chicago. There's actually nonprofits that have stood up by, through the city, to entice people to come back into Chicago. So, this is not an uncommon practice now.
Now, are they doing this with 58 and the district?
Dr. Right to my next question, my next point I was going to make. You may enter yours, okay, yes.
I'm reading your mind.
58 is bringing this to their meeting next Monday. They'd like to, Dr. Kremis-Coley, the superintendent there, has asked for me to provide feedback to her tomorrow on our board's take on it. We would like for both districts to move in unison with one another on this proposal. I think that if 58 pulled out, my recommendation to us would be to do the same. If we pulled out, I think 58 would pull out. We're kind of working together in this. We were both approached in the same meeting at the same time on it. We all met and discussed it without Michael and developers in the room. We felt very positive about it at that point, and our position collectively between the two districts has not changed since then.
Is there any corollary kind of requests that could come from a residence? Like, if they're building onto their, you know, they're building another building, or they're a residence, a resident taxpayer's.
They could. I mean, and it could be the, it could be that this company really is intending to come here anyways, and we're just deferring some of the revenue that we would be getting, and that's what others might be asking. I'm not really threatening to leave, but I won't make this an improvement if you don't give me an adjustment. We would have taken one at a time and see if we think they're realistic or not.
But I mean, could a homeowner come back and say?
Sure, they could ask for an abatement. We don't have to grant it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, but that'd be pretty rare.
It'd be pretty rare, it would be a much smaller amount it would amount.
Yeah.
I'm not talking about 750,000, 800,000 dollars, okay?
And we're, you know, we're signing an agreement with, we'd be signing an agreement with this company about certain guarantees that they would be making to both benefit, benefit us by growing that tax base, but also the larger community, which would be very difficult for a homeowner to make that same plan.
Sure.
But yeah, anybody could ask.
I'm very supportive of this. I think it would be good for the community. I think it would be good for us, and a contribution we could give back to the community.
I'm going to give Michael a chance to just, I told him as soon as I was done talking, I would have a few words, and then we can go beyond that.
Well, thank you very much, members of the school board, for giving me this opportunity, and thank you, Dr. Thiele, for your support. He serves on our Board of Directors at the Downers Grove Economic Development Corporation, and I appreciate his support. A few months ago, one of the world's premier site consulting firms, Cushman and Wakefield, came to visit me and told me that their client, this company, was conducting a national search on where they would locate their division headquarters and a state-of-the-art manufacturing facility. And one of the four options they had was to, was to basically redevelop their existing site in Downers Grove, or just build something new, and two other states were actually under consideration. And I can tell you that the two other states are offering substantially more than what they would receive here in Downers Grove. So, I knew that incentives were going to be an important key part of this decision. As Hank indicated, it's a 200,000-square-foot state-of-the-art manufacturing facility, 50,000-square-foot division headquarters. They're taking an old antiquated site and redeveloping it into a modern facility. And again, the retention of the jobs are going to add another 25 jobs over time, and it's going to be great for the local economy. You know, the flip side is that they choose another site, and we now have a hole, in effect. And, so I think this is going to be a big win for Downers Grove as a community, not just from a tax base perspective and from a job perspective, but when the public learns about this, this is going to be a national news story. This is a multinational company putting their largest division headquarters in Downers Grove, along with a major manufacturing facility. And it's going to be a big win for our community. And I wanted to address one issue that came up, and that is, well, what happens if another company makes that ask? The reason that makes this rather unique is because we're competing for it. And most companies that might be interested in any kind of an incentive, whether it's a property tax abatement or a sales tax agreement, they're not really, communities aren't really competing for them. States are competing for this project, so it makes it unique. This is a 125-year-old company. They're going to be in business for many, many, many years, and this is just going to be a great project, and I'm grateful that you're giving us your strong consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, are there any other questions besides the one Rick mentioned?
No.
Just got to make a comment.
I'm sorry.
Thank you for noting that the historical 125-year company, I mean, that helps definitely with the situation.
Part of what makes it difficult is that the confidentiality in this, in this case is important because when they do make a decision on where to locate, they have to inform employees and suppliers and vendors, and they don't want those folks all reading about it in the newspaper, so.
I understand.
Okay, any other questions for?
Any reservations moving forward when I talk to District 58?
You answered my only concern.
Yeah, mine too. You got strong support from here, me, yeah.
So, I guess it's a head nod?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I'll get to the agreement later this week, and then we'll come back on the 21st for approval of the actual.
Someone could be on the foundation.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
I like that concept of a head nod.
Yeah.
It's very cool. Thank you. Very much.
Technology and Information Services, our strategic plan 2000.
Okay, Rod, for the last year's part of last year's goals, as we're wrapping up the last year's goal statements and preparing for next year's, one of those goals was domain, in domain four, which was really long-range technology planning. Out of that work, Rod has put together a comprehensive document that I shared with the board, I think, last week. But he's going to go through the major highlights for you this evening. So, I'll turn it over to Rod.
I promised a couple people I'd be brief, so I'll do my very best. Feel free to give me the hook at any time.
It will come.
Obviously, teaching and learning has evolved, and technology has had to evolve along at the same time, albeit ahead of that, really, to try to keep pace. I dug back in the archives, and I found a very similar plan and presentation that I had prepared and presented to the board in '98. And then, back then, we were talking about 700 PCs or so that we had across the district. We were talking about our 1.5-meg internet connection, one single little line, that that'll become important next. Really interestingly, I wrote 20 years ago that we need to develop a learning plan that uses technology as a tool, not a tech plan. Wow, that's, that's pretty cool. That's true today, but unfortunately, we still need to pay, pay a mind to the tech, so I'm here to talk a little bit about that. This, I think, is the best depiction that I could find of what has happened to tech. This is our internet bandwidth that we provide and supply for our staff, staff and kids. That 98 figure, that 1.5 is off to the left of the chart. Notice how it's flat, flatlined until about 11 or so, and then it starts just dramatically increasing, you know, 50, 500, 1,000, 2,000. This year, we just went up to, this summer, a couple weeks ago, actually, we completed moving to the 4-gig level, and it's crazy. It just, a good friend of mine flies 787s to, 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 to over in Asia, and he tells me what it's like. He said, "Things approach you so fast that you have to be thinking way in advance," and that's the way tech feels to me. It feels like things are coming so fast now that you really have to be way, way out in front. So, we just have to anticipate future needs and just proactively invest, really, in the technology ecosystem we have, and that's especially critical because it's not over. This is the State Educational Technology Directors Association, and they're a respected organization. The FCC uses them for their E-rate planning, and their 17, 18 target for a district our size, we're real close to what they've earmarked for what we should be at in terms of an internet capacity for this next school year. We can't rest on that, though, because if you look at the column over, they're saying in 2021, they're looking for us to be roughly almost four times the capacity that we have right now. So, the good news is we're on the right path in terms of just an unforeseeable, really, amount of bandwidth that we're going to have to have, but that we just need to keep, keep moving fast and strong in that direction. The detailed plan that I presented you had, had these topical areas. Look at our infrastructure and the myriad complexities that go into that, our information systems that are well, well beyond our student information and financial information systems now. There are just so many different systems that we and our staff all, all use and interact with. Information security and data protection, we're in just a high-risk world right now. That's just very, 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 very critical. And of course, support, training. And governance speaks to just kind of the overall management of technology. In the, in the plan I prepared for you, I actually gave kudos to Dave Edlin, the superintendent, who 21 years ago developed the position that I'm in and hired me into that role. But at that time, it was kind of unusual. I don't think many schools were at all putting the tech person, if you will, as a cabinet role. But today, that's kind of the default, what it should be, and there are some schools that are still trying to catch up with that, but, so that, that was, that was a key, key choice. What I'm going to do is just talk about two of the areas here, here in the plan, ones that I really wanted to bring to mind. Certainly, anything else that you want to know, know about now or after the meeting, please feel free to ask. One is the infrastructure. It's complex, and it's everything, really. It's connectivity is everything. Gone are the days when we just installed all the software we needed on our computer, and we were happy as a clam. It's, it's if we can't connect to the world and to each other, we're just not, not going to work. In 2000, we did a major infrastructure update when we added on to, to the schools. In 2011, we did another complete infrastructure upgrade where we added wireless access at that time as well. Again, even then, we went with what seemed like futuristic thinking by putting an access point in every room. Most schools weren't at that point, and a lot of folks said, "Boy, that doesn't seem like we really need, need that now." But had we not done that, I think our one-to-one initiative would have been, been a non-go unless we did, so. And again, the proactive investments in the infrastructure go beyond, oftentimes, a manufacturer kind of dictates when we replace things based on, they say, after a certain amount of time, they won't support it anymore. And the other factors that are important, though, is even though a device is working just fine, it still runs, the capacity, the security, just the performance of that, as we increase the bandwidth so much and we start pushing so much across all of that, we just have to keep all of that strong. As you know, we do do audits. We have external audits performed quite often. I fully believe in having outsiders come, come in and look and tell us what we're doing right and what we're doing wrong. And we're doing a lot right, but we can always improve, too, so they always are not shy about, about trying to provide that, that help. Information security is the other area that I'll highlight. Cyber crimes are rampant today. It's like, we just feel like we're always on, we're always on high alert. You've all seen and heard about huge businesses, major, major entities that probably spend millions of dollars on security, and security staff get hacked and just have awful, awful stuff occur. We're, we're at risk, too. We have, we have a lot of information, and that is a commodity now, so, you know, it's something that we need to protect. And just our instructional time is something that we have to protect. It's, you know, when, there's just even a little blip in service that has a major, major impact. There's two factors, I think, really, in security. One is technical, and one is human. From a technical standpoint, we have pretty sophisticated firewalls and filters and those kind of protections in place. We do all our audits. We try to stay on top of that, but no hardware and software is 100% safe. There's, as you can see, big, big places that spend a lot. I think the human element is probably the weakest link, where, you know, whether it's from a data privacy standpoint, how many of us, me included, you see, you sign up for a new app, or you click the "I accept" or "I agree," and don't really read everything that you've just told them that you're willing to share with them. Email scams are just, some of the emails that come out are so believable, and they look so real, that all it takes is a click, one, one click, and that is it. So, they're just really, really key, key things.
Rod, is at the, since the new school year's starting, is there any time allotted where you can discuss that email part of it with the staff as they come back on the first or second day and say, "Hey, we have to be aware," you may get an email that looks legit. If you click on it, it could potentially open up the whole system to something.
We don't, we don't actually have something planned for the first day of school, but throughout this past year, there's a software product that we've but throughout this past year, there's a software product that we've used along with other information that we've shared. But what this software product does is it's a, it's an assessment and education tool where it will literally, in a safe way, it'll pretend.
Yes, that's, I was gonna ask that, yeah.
Fishing emails. And we, we actually, as an organization, do very, very well. But again, all it takes is one click. So with, with this tool, it helps us educate staff, kind of what, what those emails look like, what things to watch out for. It seems like the best way we found to do that is just by experiencing it firsthand.
It's good practice, yeah.
And then when you're there in that, kind of that, that is, that's, that's a moment where you can teach, you know.
Yeah. That was my question, so thank you.
So, so, Quat, you mean, you're, you're right, the sophistication of the email scams are amazing these days. And then maybe this is more of a question for Gina than this, it's for you, Rod. Completely, what do we do to help educate the students about the sophistication of these type of email scams? Because I think they're the ones, I know it's a little bit off-topic here from the plan, but they're the ones that I would think would be most vulnerable to this type of a sophistication. So do we have that built in? Do we have a computer security, you know, cybersecurity day or anything like that planned at the schools to educate students?
So we do teach about digital literacy and digital citizenship and safety. I can't speak specifically on email and exactly what they teach, but it's part of the larger curriculum and it's something that we're continuing to focus on.
That larger curriculum, I'm sure, I wasn't here when we developed it, but statewide, we were all required to put in certain things into that curriculum. So I'm, I'm assuming that we followed the state guidelines on that when we developed it and it would contain pieces around information security inside.
And we continue to do that in specific courses where it's all students, but we also do what I call push-in lessons in certain areas as well.
So just, just a few things out of those two areas I wanted to highlight a little bit. The network fiber that I mentioned there at the beginning, we focused a lot on the external connections, you know, to ramp up the bandwidth of our internet connection to the outside. There's fiber optic cable that runs throughout the schools that connects all the switches and the switching closets to the cores and all of that. That was installed in two, in two, in two thousand. And back then, it was state-of-the-art. Today, it's not. I mean, the, the minimum standards for capacity and performance that one would lay today is ten to thirty times what that will hold. I mean, it still works, but as we look at ramping up our access and our internet bandwidth even more, the, the type of equipment that will be replacing soon in the schools will just need and expect just that higher level. So that's, that's something that we'll need to look at.
So Rod, are you talking about the, the fiber or the hardware that you have placed?
Probably both. Probably both, actually. The fiber optic cable is quite, quite old, so that, that is still sustaining us fine. But the actual, the, the next two things, so for, the next thing for sure, the network switches were purchased in two thousand and eleven. And I remember at that meeting saying, "About seven years or so, we'll probably need to take a look at these again. We're almost there." But yeah, the, the standards and the capacity of what they're able to process and do is much, much more than. And it's, it's, it's not at all, I mean, our audits have shown us that the fiber, the switches, access points that we have in place and not are, right now, are not a bottleneck at all. But give us a few more years and as we continue to, to expand. So it's kind of one of those things where, where we need to look ahead.
And as we move forward with the master facility plan, whatever direction that goes and we make that decision, are we gonna have any trouble connecting the existing hardware and fiber that's in the building to whatever would be new in whatever type of, in the new sections of the building?
I, I don't think so. That, that, I mean, things are pretty connectable in terms of that, you know, they're, they're, the way the, the network is, is designed right now, if we added new wiring closets and such, you know, we have the capacity to go ahead and add those now. But timeframe-wise, some of that may, we're, we're, we're hoping not, not to do what we had to do a number of years ago, which is just do what I would call a forklift upgrade of everything. We want to kind of upgrade it in parts a little bit so that from a cost perspective, we can sustain that a bit easier and it just makes it a little bit easier to get the whole thing done, done as well. I talked about internet bandwidth already. And those two areas, though, there's a couple of things to mention there. One is just the expansion that we, we've talked, talked about right now. Our wide-area network we have in place right now is, is fine, the one that connects us to each other. One thing we do need to look at, look at that for in the near future is to build some redundancy into that. This summer, we built some formal redundancy into the internet where there's a major internet connection that comes out of this building and another major internet connection now that comes out of north. Different, they come from, they each come from their own spots. So, so that if we lose one of them, we just finished the testing for this last week where if one fails, the other one will pick up and sustain everybody.
Do we have today for the WAN, do we have, you're saying we don't have anything in place or we're just, we do, just our redundancy plan for the, for the WAN?
We don't have redundancy in place for the WAN right now. That's something that we want to kind of do as a next step. The internet connection was the logical place to start, one, because we needed more bandwidth there. So instead of doubling the connection we had here, we added a connection and made sure it was from a different source so that if we lost one, we would still have the other. Kind of a thing that, that we'll talk, talk about over this next year is the concept of us owning our, our own WAN, our own fiber. There's, there's an ROI model out there that would suggest that, that over the course of five years or so, that investing in our own network, in effect, after that peer, period of time is done, that the, the monthly costs that we pay for now would just be dramatically reduced. And then we would own that, that, we would be able to increase our capacity through that just by changing the network devices we have on the end and not paying for more. Something that we'll have to look at.
You're talking about putting in redundancy, so that's gonna add another layer potentially of cost. So you're doing some type of planning right now to look at potentially, long-term, what's the breaking point for purchasing fiber, owning your own fiber as opposed to continue to pay monthly fee to buy service, basically?
Right, right, yeah, yeah. And for the information security side, in addition to the, the firewalls and kind of keeping up the technical side of things, that whole privacy area is just such a big, important area in schools right now with, again, the fact that we're not even close anymore to the environment that we used to be where we had control over exactly what software people used and exactly under what ways. Apps and websites and so many services are just freely out there. And almost all of them have "I accept" or "I agree" things that folks click. So what, what we're looking to do is, is to attack that by, by just going out and I think initially deciding what are our standards that we're willing to accept from an application or anything that someone is subscribing to use. And then going through a discovery process, trying to get a good idea of what are all the various apps and services that, that people have signed up for. And then ultimately, I think, any way of vetting process where as, as people want to start to use new apps and things, that there's at least a prescribed way that, that that happens.
So right now, so for, for instance, for Chromebooks, do we have, I mean, students download apps? They're not restricted from doing so. Is that something we might consider doing?
It depends how, how the vetting process goes. I know I've talked with other districts that have started processes like this and there's varying degrees that people have done it. Some, some have went to the degree of, of saying, "We're, we're, we're gonna draw a line here and then after this, any app usage goes through, you know, these steps." We're, we're a ways, ways away from that yet, but, but that's the kind of thing that we're looking at.
To Nancy's point, I, I think that's probably something that's coming 'cause I know we mentioned kind of the staff, but my thoughts are more aligned with the students, the fact that they are very app-intensive culture of people. So just a long-term plan for what it looks like from a student perspective on how we're gonna kind of control that piece of it or, or not, you know.
Correct, right. And then the last thing I, I kind of spoke of before about just, again, that human factor being the key thing, just to continue using the, the tool that we're using and develop that further just to make staff that much more aware of, of what bad emails look like and, and try to be very, very discerning about that. And as I say, staff is very, very good with that, but just, just takes one. So those, those were the two areas that I, I wanted to cover. I realize there was a lot of other material in the, in the plan, but just to try to be brief and, but yet cover those things that I, I thought were most important right now. Any questions, comments?
I just have one more question. First of all, I thought you're, I can't open my, but I read it earlier. So I, I did appreciate everything you wrote, but my question still remains, and it's actually not for you, Rod. My question still remains about behavior change and getting staff to use all the technology efficiently and effectively and making sure that there are, that staff continue to grow in their own use of it. So it would be nice at some point to have a, a discussion or maybe a report about efforts that are going on with teachers or educators, especially those who, you know, might be a little bit resistant to, to change, to using the, the software that we've available to. Thanks, Rod.
Thank you.
Student recognition?
Sure. So last year, we changed, we eliminated class rank and out of that, we talked about how students would be recognized at graduation for levels of honors. In the second half of the school year last year, we had a committee of folks come together and look at where thresholds had fallen in the past and what some other schools had done and what might fit best for us. Out of that came a recommendation that we're planning on moving forward with next year, but we want to inform the board and to kind of close the loop as to what we talked about with class rank. So we had some different categories or levels of recognition in the past, but many of them were tied to rank. So now we're tying those, as we talked about almost a year ago, the idea of setting a threshold and any student that meets that level of achievement will get that recognition rather than a finite percentage or group of students. So where we ended up with was the top, the, replacing top two percent with distinguished honors. That would be a GPA of four point four and above. They would be recognized with a gold stole, gold cords and a gold tassel at graduation. High honors would, would replace the all-academic team with a GPA of four point oh and above. At graduation, they would have a gold cord and a gold tassel. And honors would replace what we had before was the presidential award and that would be a GPA of three point four and above. They would have a gold tassel at graduation. We would still have a variety of departmental-type awards. For example, National Honor Society and Avid both have emblems that are on their stoles as they march. And then what we're going to do to emphasize all of these awards is to make graduation garb consistent across both schools. Well, not both schools. Each school will have consistent, regardless of gender, the same graduation cap and gown, thus making the academic awards more prominent and the, you know, gender of the student, you know, not be what we're, not what we're focusing on in graduation, but the actual academic achievements over the course of four years. So North High will have a purple gown with a white stole. And I, South is still in discussion as to whether it'll be a dark blue gown with a Columbia blue or a white stole. I don't think they've decided yet which one of the colored stoles they will have yet. Oh, Columbia, thank you.
So what color is Columbia blue?
That's the, the medium blue.
The lighter, baby blue. So that's, that's the plan that we're gonna move forward with. We're gonna inform all of the students, here's, you know, here's what we're shooting for and then now it's no longer a moving target for those recognitions.
Well, I think it's great. I think it's great that we're gonna be more open so that more people can be recognized for doing very well and I'm glad we're getting rid out, rid of the gender-specific colors for graduation.
And I like it because it's, both schools are gonna have the same thing. Right now, I think it's a little, it's, it's, it's quite, quite different on both sides of town, so I like the consistency.
The fact that it's fluid based on the student body in that class makes this, you know, just, here's the bar, go for it.
I like it. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. The district goals.
All right. Last year, we had nine different domains that we focused on over the course of the year and within those domains, we set a, we, we created a variety of tasks and, and activities inside of there to accomplish those. What I wanted to bring the board now and get your feedback on it, then on the twenty-first, we'll officially approve it. But I'll be looking for one of those head nods today that we're on the right track here, is we, we went back at it this year and administratively took a look at where those nine domains were last year. And we've brought it down to five areas that we think encapsulate all of the work across the district. The first one, domain one, actually collapses in yesterday, last year, three different domains. But we think that this really reflects what we're trying to do with our students, which is student experience. Instead of breaking apart academics, technology, social, emotional, all of these things, that really, this is what we're focused on. It's the first thing on the list and it's really looking at both academic and social-emotional programs. As I shared with our new teachers this morning, the district's mission statement, the first two things in it talk about creating a caring and challenging environment. To me, that is the definition of the student experience. That's how we see that play out. So that's the first one. The second goal is then the development and evaluation of our staff, continuing to grow the staff skills, so what you just alluded to, Nancy, and how we do that, how we create structures for that, that, how we create, create opportunities and empower staff to take advantage of those and to create expectations for growth for all of us moving forward. The third one is really about communications with all parties. Last year, we had, this one was really broken out into many different domains. We had communication with staff, with the community, with the board, with students. So we kind of collapsed all of this into one domain and really around the idea that we've been talking about for the last year, that the best way to do that is through sharing our stories, really making. our stories, really making what we're doing personal and connected, and by constantly, transparently informing our community about what we're doing here and the strides that we're making with our students. The fourth domain is really around resources. It's around managing our fiscal resources and our facilities to make sure not only do we get the best out of those resources now, but we're prepared for them in the future. A huge part of that this year will of course be the Master Facilities Plan and the work in that area. Actually, that will bridge Domains Three and Four around that Master Facilities Plan. But it's continuing our trend of excellent fiscal management and great facilities. And then finally, hopefully, we're done with the Master Facilities, the Master Facilities Plan process this year and are moving forward to executing it, which then crosses off of the last thing remaining from the last strategic plan was the Master Facilities Plan. So once that's crossed off the list, it's time to start looking at what's next and really long-range strategic planning. So I'm hoping that we can come to a resolution with the Master Facility Plan, and this year, towards the end of the year, start outlining what kinds of steps we want to take next year, in the following school, not this year, but the next one, in formal strategic planning in some way, so that we're looking to the future of what we could could do there. So we're, I am proposing, along with the the administrative team, we've been working on these for the last few weeks, that these be our five domains of goals with the statements underneath it. If the board is in favor of this, we will start outlining, as we did last year, just what the tasks are, and as we we set out on those, and as we have them and as we accomplish them, we'll inform the board throughout the year as we go along, leading through the year.
So you mentioned that there were eight before?
There was nine last year.
Okay, so somehow I missed those. So I I think you said you combined.
There, yeah.
Yeah, he incorporated them.
A bunch of the communication ones together under three, a lot of the student ones together under one.
Okay.
We found that both in three, in the communication ones, we ended up with a lot of the same tasks repeating, because we were doing the same thing to meet multiple audiences, and we found a lot of the student work that we were doing, like, we were doing the same thing in tech, that we were doing in social-emotional, that we were doing in student learning. So it was the same task to meet all of those things that we think rolling that all together gives more of an accurate view of how we're working towards that.
Yeah, I think this is much easier to read and to focus on what what you want to do in each group, so I'm all for this.
Yeah, I feel like this is something that I could, like, last year's, I kind of needed the domains in front of me, because there's a lot to remember, and they were pretty wordy in in each of the descriptions of the domains, where this, I feel like student experience, I can remember that, right? Sharing our stories, I can, so it'll be a lot easier for me to reinforce, as I as I will do this year, as I did last year, as we have achievements, as we have accomplishments, I always connect those back to what district goal that came from, just as we did tonight with Rod's strategic plan. Makes it a lot easier to do that if it's a nice, short, easy statement.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Anything else?
All right.
Okay, dress guidelines.
All right. Dress guidelines, we've been looking at, we started looking at these at the end of last school year, but one of our concerns is that our old language that was in the dress guidelines, which are inside the student discipline policy, thereby our board policy, that's a long walk there. We've been looking at it and feeling like they're really, the old language is really tailored to fashion and fashion, current fashion standards. We wanted to change that language so that it would be applicable to whatever the changing changes are in fashion trend. We also felt that there was some legacy language in there that was, if not gender-biased, gender-slanted. I don't know if there's a difference between the two, but you get where I'm going. So we've cleaned this up to come up with wording that we feel we could communicate out, that our deans could build some examples out of based on current fashion trends, but that the current fashion trends don't dictate the policy. So Ed and Janice have worked with me a great deal on this, so I'll kind of loop them in if there's any discussion here. But the the change in here is changing it to, this is the way it would read, modesty is always appropriate, students are to wear garments with appropriate coverage, period. For example, clothes that are revealing, such as exposed underwear, see-through clothing, exposed stomachs or backs. And then we struck out, I think, the rest. This didn't come over correctly.
Low-cut tops.
Yeah, low-cut, oh, there it goes, low-cut tops, the other ones underlined, because it's gone, are considered inappropriate. So that kind of straightened it down, and a lot of the examples that used to be there disappear. So all the underlined language that was in there.
Are you guys okay with that?
Yeah, what's wrong with spaghetti straps?
The spaghetti strap doesn't necess, oh, no, spaghetti straps are.
That should be stricken.
That should be stricken.
That should be stricken?
Yeah.
Yeah, the second.
Half. Second half of this where it's underlined as stricken.
Yeah.
Oh, see, I thought that was.
Well, the underlying stays or does it go?
No, so it's the second, I don't know why it didn't come over correctly.
But you can't show your bra straps, so.
Right, so this will be.
You'd have to have a strap that's wide enough to cover your bra strap.
Well, that's fine.
Just so spaghetti straps really are out.
So it stops at see-through clothing, exposed stomachs or backs, period.
And.
And low-cut tops.
And low-cut tops.
Are considered inappropriate.
I don't know why the strike.
But the sagging pants is all going to be stricken.
No, because that will, that, to me, that's a fashion trend. The the problem with the low sagging.
Yeah, but some people haven't gotten that memo.
The the challenge with the low-sagging pants is not low-sagging pants. The challenge is exposed underpants. Right, that's the problem.
And butt cracks.
Yeah, low-sagging pants, and you have on athletic shorts underneath it.
Well, what about yoga pants, where you can see the underwear, but the yoga pants are black?
So.
And they're tight enough.
That's exposed underwear, you can see it, but it's hidden, but really, they're so they're so restrictive that you really can't. Where do yoga pants fall in?
What we would, what we're aiming at here is to come up with a policy that if it's causing a disruption in the educational environment, if it's disruptive to learning, then we will outline what those clothes, that clothing is and discipline.
The reason why I'm asking is that I have to deal with this every day at school, and I, it's a problem at my school with the yoga pants, and I, how do you guys handle it? You know, they're very constrictive, they're very tight. If the top happens to not be very long, the way they constrict.
You know, we we went to these changes.
Yeah.
Because we didn't want to list out the cans and cans, because it's often dictated by body type, size, style. So if you just lift yoga pants, well, yoga pants on some kids fit perfectly fine, yoga pants on other kids, not so much.
Thank you.
And we want to be able to address it for what's appropriate in school.
Well, the deans have enough leeway so that they can do their job, I guess is what I'm asking.
They're working together across town, so they're talking about all of these situations. But it's no different than when kids come to prom. Some kids who come to prom look very nice, because it fits appropriate. Other kids can wear the exact same dress.
I have the same issue when I check room prom. I understand.
So that's why we went away from.
I don't want to take the power away from the deans, is what I'm saying.
The idea here is to put the power back in the deans.
That's what I, that was my question. I want, I don't want the deans to be relieved of any corrections that they could possibly then correct.
So here's my hot button. As a mother of a daughter and a person who drives around a lot of young women who have been dress-coded because they're five foot eleven and their shorts are too short.
Right.
Because they're five foot eleven, it's hard to find shorts that, or whatever, multiple times I have heard from my daughter and other girls that they have been pulled aside and told that they cannot dress as they are, because it's disturbing to the boys.
Well, this makes it so it's appropriate coverage.
So appropriate coverage is fine, but let us also send the message, please, that when the deans pull people aside, they're dressed inappropriately or appropriately, not because it's it's disturbing to the to the boys.
That's interesting.
Yes.
That's inappropriate, that is inappropriate.
Agreed. I agree. I guess my question was, I don't want the deans to be so constrained that they can't do their job by, I want them to be able to use their discretion, use their experience to make whatever judgment they have to make. I don't want this to constrain them, I guess is my.
This should help them, and Nancy, to your point, it's not only the communication with the kids, we're going to work with our deans to communicate with our faculty. So if a teacher sends a kid down, the dean will reach back to that teacher and say, yes, this is good, or no, it's not, and here's why.
Okay.
So over time, the consistency hopefully will overtake things.
Thank you.
The word will get out.
Yes, and it's really about the communication piece. And when we talk to kids, I actually wrote some notes, because I'm shooting my video with children out, I'm not talking about dress code, I'm talking to the kids about what's respectful. What's respectful when you attend Lollapalooza in the summer might be fine for that environment, but that doesn't mean it's respectful in the school environment.
Right.
And as students and faculty, we have to adhere to that. That's what it's about.
Well, again, my question was, do you feel appropriate that this will help you and your deans maintain the?
We worked with the, both the associate principals who oversee the dean on this dress code, so they looked at it too, in addition to us.
Okay, so they've had input? And they're, everybody's on board?
Yep.
I got no problem then.
Yes, and they've even gone so far as to look at images of pictures and say, would this be allowed, would this not be allowed?
Okay.
So they're busy having conversations about it.
Okay.
And the deans, the deans get up in front of the entire student body on our first day, short day, the upperclassmen and the freshmen, and this is a topic they're going to talk about on both sides of town, and they're going to make sure they're addressing it the same way.
Okay.
And it's the same, north and south is now the same. Thank you.
Correct. So we are, if, once again, lots of head nods today. We're we're planning on moving forward with, this is going to be the wording and the practice going forward. We'll start the school year on the 18th, knowing that we'll take it back for official approval on the 21st, just the way the timing works, but I haven't heard any any pushback yet.
No, but could you resend that out with what the final verbiage will be, because it was a little confusing?
It didn't copy and paste correctly.
Yeah.
I thought I saw it. Did you have it?
Yeah.
It was in there, but it.
But I'll make sure we send it out again.
Yeah, just so we're all sure, we understand what it means.
Yeah.
And thank you, thank you for doing that, because that was, that was an area I've heard a lot between the two schools and wow.
That's right.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Approval of the 2017-18 tentative budget?
I'm going to turn this over to Mark in a second. One of the things that I I want to point out is that, obviously, fiscally, this district has a history of doing a wonderful job. A lot of that is attributed to Mark and jury and the rest of the staff over there. At the same time, it continues to be a challenging, if not more challenging, thing to do in the state of Illinois with us not knowing if we will receive funding, when we will receive funding, when when funding is released, if we'll receive a check, and also a lot of different things out there with potential legislation over the next year, like pensions, property tax reform, different mandates where they continue to dish them out but not rescind them, and these variables could change in real time. It's not unheard of for the state legislature to go in in the morning and then come back out with some kind of bill that impacts us starting effective that day. So Mark's going to give you the best to project out our budget, but I want to just couch that knowing we we live in the state of Illinois and things could change quickly, and.
Or not so quickly.
Or not so quickly. And another piece that's playing into this this year is ESSA and title money and the fact that federal grants, we did hear today that they finally put some dates to some numbers, but typically by now, we've already brought you our federal grant allocations, we know what we're doing. We've now gotten dates as to when we can file for those things. So they're like, yeah, just move forward as if we approved everything, so that's another variable that's hanging out there. So with all of those caveats, I'm going to turn over to Mark to go through what we look like for the next year with our tentative budget.
Actually, you just covered everything I was going to say.
We're done. Thank you, Mark.
It'll be a record for Mark.
Mark's shortest, Mark's shortest talk ever.
Say aye.
All righty then.
I see a lot of head nods.
I nod. We all nod.
Normally, I would start out with my train wreck picture for the General Assembly, because it's still as appropriate, but I was, I was getting tired of seeing that perhaps. It is a balanced budget in that the the green button down here is zero. We have the same amount of inflows going and same amount of outflows of the district projected. It was, but it has, as Hank was saying, a couple of critical assumptions. It is be, it assumes in terms of our fund balances, that is be is going to make good on the $1.7 million that's in the pipeline. I do believe that's going to happen. We're being told by every level that it's just a matter of them getting the cash in and paying it out, that they have every intention of of doing that. And also that the general, the second piece is that the General Assembly, you know, we always assume, hold harmless, we just say, no, zero income from the state. And when I do come forward with a five-year projection, it'll be September 18th board meeting when we present this budget with any possible changes for a final, final budget. We assume that they will hold us harmless, but it really involves $6 million we're talking about in state funding between the categorals and state aid and and some other smaller grants. So it's, there's a lot there that's, it's up in the air. And so we kind of approached this in at the district level of kind of like a hunker-down budget. It really wasn't, let's go out and dream and come on back with what we think. We knew we had a .7 CPI, we knew that new construction was was about .7, so 1.4, and just, that's only the tax revenue, and you know how that works. It's it's only a portion of our total revenue stream. I'll walk through why that doesn't look like that on the revenue section, just to to clarify some pieces there, but we we actually did do, I think, some some positive things inside of this budget. It wasn't just roll your own budget. Basically, the message was try and do the same thing this year with the money we had last year, and if you, if there's issues, come back and we'll, we'll see what exceptions we can make and where we can, because we do have some things that ebb and flow in the budget, and for the most part, we were able to pull it together. We did add three administrative positions, but they're all very closely tied to student learning, to student activities, to student special ed needs, to areas that really affect kids the most. So I think that was the reason that, you know, I think it was easy to to add those. They were really needed to help us, help our students. And it still addresses the ongoing, there's $100,000 in there, or just a little bit less than that, because we have paid part of the bill for the consulting estimates that we have for our Master Facility Plan. So we we intend to to keep that moving forward, and that's built into this budget, as well as some smaller inroads that we're making with staff development and other things and and student learning. But for the most part, this was, again, a pretty tight budget, was a very difficult budget. Everybody had to take second and third looks at their their areas to see what they could manage with. Excuse me. If we look at the revenues, maybe just on a big picture, combined revenues there, if you look at it in the the orange column there, it looks like it's only going up .6. Remember, this is a comparison to last year, but and there's a couple items for, like, the local, other local revenues last year was unusually high. We brought in some accounts, if you recall, that were activity funds, and that was a one-time influx of some of those balances that have been in the activity funds, and so that really kind of blurred that item there. General state aid, we are anticipating virtually the same numbers. We already were trimmed, not from the the ISB, but through the Department of Commerce, who had a small workforce budget that was helping some of our post-12th grade kids at T-99, I believe it is primarily, with with life skills. But we still ran the program this summer, and we just lost that much in federal. Otherwise, right now, we're assuming we're going to get just about the same in federal dollars overall. May not happen, and it may be, you know, that we lose more than the $35,000, but May not happen, and it may be, you know, that we lose more than the $35,000, but until we have hard numbers, we're going to kind of go with it. That may be, just some of these numbers may change by the time we get to September 18th. We might get real numbers and different amounts, and we may have a different picture for you. But right now, we're rolling that forward. Federal aid, we do have, actually, there are some things that we just feel aren't going to happen in the, I think it's Title II, and idea, we have a couple of the flow-through budget, we have some currents over, so we have trimmed some of that down. And so, if you take those three items, the last three items, and if those were constant compared to last year, we'd have about a 1.1% overall budget increase. And when we have 1.4 just on taxes, that's about what I expect our budget to be, 1.1. So, I feel pretty comfortable where we're at, but we just don't know where some of these things are going to go, and the next, hopefully, month or so we'll know. But, so, big picture, we're, if we just can hold on to this, we'll be okay. And expenditure size, starting with the salaries, the 1.7 looks like, oh, we pretty much kept all of our increases at 1.4. But one thing, if you look down into the sub-funds, where you look at the building fund, building fund, we didn't have everybody hired for the whole year. We couldn't find some custodians, there were vacant positions there. One of our administrators at the north campus left early, we didn't fill that position until July. So, really, it's the comparison to last year's, which was down a little bit in the building fund. But for the most part, we were pretty close to 1.4 on everybody. Actually, in some areas, we did better than we thought, just because we had some retirements. And if you actually take salaries and benefits on a combined basis, I think our totals there was 1.4. So, in some areas, we've targeted benefit changes, we've not given salary increases, and we actually did target benefits and drew some of the employees into less expensive health plan. We also had no increase on the PPOs, so that also helped our benefits. So, when you combine those two as a total compensation, and that's how we work with almost all contracts, we were right on the money with 1.4.
Remember, 1.4 was that combined CPI and new construction number.
Right, that's kind of the number we work with in-
Excuse me, thank you.
In all those areas. Really, the big story here is the last item, and it's, if you got to the narrative in the memo, I threw the chart in there that Scott was nice enough to pull together for me. We have 23 new freshmen coming in, special needs, that are tuition-based students, and it's almost more than double than what we normally get coming in. And so, that's really going to put some pressure on our budget. And one of the bigger problems is that we haven't, they haven't done all the IP meetings and classes, settle on everything, but we have two, at least two and probably three that are going to be in residential placement. And one of those placements is probably $300,000. So, you can see, we've got $920,000 right on special ed, just preparing for what could be the worst-case scenario in terms of increases there. And so, hopefully, that all will pan out, but that's what we're looking at right now. So, that's the biggest, biggest thing that pops out, should pop out at the expenditures. The last one is something you only see once a year when we do this, and it's really a recap of the non-operating funds. And again, the reason we keep these separate is because they fluctuate so much. For example, capital projects gets all funded in one year and we spend that out over multiple years. It, typically, schools keep these separate from operating funds because they have different transactions that are really large and could distort the whole picture on a combined basis. For capital projects, we, it's primarily the life safety work that we have that we're going to be finishing up. So, we have about $2 million that we expect to come out of that fund this year. The $100,000 of revenue going into the capital projects fund under the revenue section, $100,000, $500,000 is developer contributions. We're probably going to see the end of the timber edge stuff that should be completed this year. I don't think it's fully occupied, but we'll see some of that, some of that coming in. And that goes into a different capital project fund. It's not in life safety, it's in a different one, developers' contributions. And we, we may use that to help supplement the building fund, because we really did tighten down the building fund this year. And so, if we get into a pinch, that's something we could use those proceeds for. Long-term debt, and I just want to point out, we are, I think, really doing a great job of controlling this and actually paying it down. We have, if you look at the amount here, we're paying 6.5 million that we pay from debt services. 5.9 of that is the long-term stuff that'll be falling off in 1819. The rest of it is what's called debt service extension base, it's for the life safety primarily that we're doing. But we're paying 6.5 million out of the 20 million, that's 31% of it. So, we've just got a couple more years of really paying it down, and we'll have knocked off most of that debt. What we're paying from operating funds includes debt certificates, different alternate revenue bonds that we've decided we would put the pressure on our operating funds rather than going back and issuing debt service extension-based bonds and just adding to the taxpayer's burden. So, I'm really proud of that. That's about 25% of our outstanding debt, so we're getting, that's winding down for it as well. So, the long-term picture for us is good, and in fact, you know, the big issue here is that if we do get hammered by the state or fed, things don't shake out like we expect them to for this year, or the picture gets murky going forward, we do have options to go back and protect our school system. We do have debt service extension-based authority. We could go out and issue those bonds, but we, right now, we'd like to still pay them out of operations. And if they do what they're telling us that they're going to do, and that is to hold us harmless and not take a bite out of us, and not push anything down like new pension costs that we can't afford, we should be able to not have to take that angle. But that's one of the, the primary safety net that we have in the district, again, to maintain the programming that we have. And we still have, again, I'll keep parading, it's the second lowest tax rate of any school in DuPage County. We have a very, I think, very fair and very good tax rate compared to the services we provide, so. So, September 18th is when we would bring this, it has to be on display for 30 days. It'll be on our website, it'll be at our building locations here in the two campuses, actually T-99, three attendance centers, and several libraries out in the community as well, though. They always say that they, nobody comes there to look at them, but we put them there, at least they're there. And then at the 18th, we may have changes. If I make changes, I'll, if we make changes, I'll let you know through, if we see something. And obviously, it'll be big for us to make a change if something happens with state or federal funding. But otherwise, on September 18th, we'd look for formal approval of it. And that's, it, kind of 30,000-foot view of it. Any questions, anything?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to echo that, though, and just expand upon it a little bit more, and that is that we are all very happy with the stewardship of the district's money, and we appreciate it from you and from you and from the entire cabinet, and from the teachers and everybody who's keeping costs down.
Jury was a big, is a big help. You know, we, we're doing this without Michelle right now, she's at our north campus, so we, this was a very short time. So, I appreciate you letting me do this at a workshop. If we had to deliver this in July, it would have, it would have been hectic.
So, right now, what you're looking for is approval to put the tentative budget on display.
Right, so we need, this is an action item, and we need to have it, approve the tentative budget, and then we'll put it on display.
Go ahead.
I move that we put the tentative budget on display.
I'll second.
Can I have the public hearing, is that, that's part of the motion, the public hearing?
Right, there's-
Could you read the whole motion as it's in there, if you wouldn't mind?
Don't hold it up.
Sure, here, here.
As we're going to set a public hearing for September 18th as well.
Sorry, thank you.
Should be right there.
Oh, I see now, okay. Recommended action?
Yeah. Recommended.
Somebody else is going to have to read it, it's not here.
Yeah, you touched it.
Here, there it is. Rarely do we laugh over the budget.
There it is.
Yeah, I really choked up over the budget here. Okay, motion for the Board of Education to accept the tentative budget for 2017, 2018 for display purposes and establish at 7:45 PM, September 18, 2017, an administrative service center, community rule for the public hearing.
I second.
Shaw Fuller?
Aye.
Rick Pavanado?
Aye.
Dan Nicholas?
Aye.
Terry Pavasich?
Aye.
And Nancy Kupfer?
Aye, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody here for the second reception visitors? Hearing, none. Do we need a motion for adjournment?
I move we adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Great, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We're adjourned.